Call the meeting to order at 6:10. Roll call. Martina McNichols.
Present.
Ronald Keels, I'm here. Derek Damelin.
Present.
Raff Lopez is not here. And Kim Bickham. Okay, let's stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And of the Texas flag, honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, now for public comments.
Mm-hmm. And the public comment is different, oops, this is not from this one, that's your minute. It's going to be from this one.
Yeah.
Different from the public hearing. So no one here for public comments separate from the public hearing.
Okay, is there anybody here for public comments separate from the hearing tonight? If not, we'll move on. Public hearing tonight to hear input from the public regarding a zoning variance from Chapter 77, zoning, section 77-27B2, minimum front lot width in open single-family residential zoning district for an approximate one-acre tract of land, including right-of-way dedication, generally located along the western side of Mason Road, PID 698555, abutting the property at 8114 Mason Road, on the south side situated in the HT and BRR and Company survey, abstract 484, Brazoria County, Texas, providing for variance to the minimum front lot width within the opening single-family residential district from the city's zoning ordinance, providing for separability and providing a penalty in an amount not to exceed $2,000 for each day of violation of any provisions thereof.
And then before you call the conference, I'm going to give the staff presentation so that we can talk about it.
So the staff, talk about this.
Good evening, board members. This is a zoning variance request for a one-acre lot located along the western side of Mason Road, adjacent to property located at 8114 Mason Road on the south side. The one-acre measurement includes the right-of-way and so far right-of-way dedication, the after, so after right-of-way dedication, the property acreage will be less than one acre. Property is owned open single-family residential, which requires a minimum 120-foot front lot width, as shown in Exhibit 2. The existing front width is 102, and because of that, applicant requests this variance. As you can see in Exhibit 1, in 2019, the subject site was part of the 3.4-acre property, which was subdivided via mated and bound into a 2.4-acre lot and one-acre lot. As you can see in Exhibit 1, there was existing house and driveway in the one-acre portion. You can see in Exhibit 2 and 3, in 2021, the subdivision was reconfigured, resulting in the one-acre lot having the front width of the only 102 feet. The adjacent 2.4-acre lot has been sold, preventing any reconfiguration to meet the 120-foot minimum. Staff reviewed the zoning variance criteria, and the findings are included in the report. Please note that if the variance is not approved, the one-acre lot would not meet minimum front lot width requirements, making construction of a single-family home impossible. Reconfiguration is no longer feasible due to the sold adjacent lot, creating a practical limitation for development. Regarding staff recommendation, the reduced lot width is the result of subdividing a large tract without plating and without following city standards. Nonconforming result, nonconformities resulting for noncompliance generally do not satisfy approval of a variance. However, the deviation is not large, and there are similar lots elsewhere in the city with similar deficiency. If the board considers approval, staff recommends the condition outlined in the report. Notices were sent to all property owners within the 200 feet, and to date, staff has received one informational inquiry and two letters of oppositions.
And in your packets, the first two letters on the front of your packet, that is what was received by the residents for the adjoining property owners that could not be here this evening.
And I would like to add that the applicants here, they're the owners of the property, and if y'all have any questions of the applicant, they'll be happy to answer, and we are happy to answer any questions y'all may have of staff.
Okay, so we'll.
Just go ahead and open the hearing.
Okay, we'll open the hearing for comments. At 6:17. Does that sound good? Come on forward.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is George Saji. I am one of the owner of this property, and unfortunately, we made a mistake. When we was selling the other property, we called the survey one to separate one acre. We had no knowledge of, it got to be 120 feet frontage to be applied with the city's conformity. But right now, we have this property for the last four years. We cannot do anything with that property unless we get compliance with the city.
The thing I want to add is, we just regular citizen. We not very well versed with all the procedure in terms of plating and development. We didn't want to do it ourselves, so we reached out to professionals, in this case it's survey one, and nowhere in this process that they advised us that we need to go to the city and have these discussions. So we, even though we acknowledge the issue that was, was, we own the issue, it was our issues, but we did reach out to the professional in this field. We acquired a service, but in this case, they failed to let us know, inform us that there's a process that we have to go through. So that's why we in this situations.
So y'all own the property next to it?
Yes, we did. We did, yes.
Not knowing.
Not knowing, yes. Yeah, yeah, so, yeah.
What's your intent for this property? Is it single-family residential?
Yes, so we have someone who interested in building.
Just let me, this is the public hearing for them to give their comments, and then when it comes on the agenda to discussing the item, then you can hear from the applicant or from anybody as the chair, you can recognize anybody to speak and have a dialogue back and forth, but at this point, we're here to hear from them, and usually it's the public too, to just get some input. And when we come to the item, we'll be able to hear some more stuff, and you'll be able to discuss it back and forth.
Okay, so save your questions.
Yeah. So I think George also have, I think ideally, we would like to develop this piece of property. It's a beautiful piece of property. It's one-acre lot. 120 is plenty of frontage. We don't have 120, but we have 102, which is still very good frontage. It's still a big lot. We can build a very beautiful home in the city meanwhile. The value worth around $500,000. You bring in some nice family and bring some tax revenue for the city as well. So we acknowledge it was our mistake that we created these issues, but we think we can remedy this somehow, and we still be able to resolve it and bring some value to city as well.
Yeah. Since you guys are here, since you can have a sit-down with me.
Okay, if y'all don't have anything else, y'all can go ahead and sit down.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll do a second call if there's any other comments that are to be made. And a third call. Okay, so I'm going to close this part at 6:22.
And then on that one, it is the motion for the consent agenda.
Okay. Okay, can I have a motion for the consent agenda?
I make a motion for the consent agenda. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
A second.
Okay, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and it passes four to O. Okay, so we're at the regular agenda, considering the possible action to approve a zoning variance to Chapter 77, zoning section 77-27B2, minimum lot width in open single-family residential zoning district. The subject site is generally located along the western side of Mason Road, abutting the property at 8114 Mason Road, on the south side situated in the HT and BRR Company survey, abstract 484, Brazoria County, Texas. So we're open for discussion.
And this discussion can be amongst y'all, or if you guys have questions for the applicant, the chair can call the applicant back up so that you guys can have dialogue with the applicant, or if you have questions for the staff, this is where you can ask the questions to the staff as well.
I have a question. So I'm looking at a.
Is your mic on here?
No. I'm looking at the map, just a Google map here, and it looks like there's properties south of where this property is at, and there's a house in between. Do you know if that property, it looks newer on here, did that one get a variance as well? Looks like it might be under 120 road frontage. One house south of where the U driveway is at. Does that make sense?
So I believe there's no variance approved for that property. They may not have needed one when it was built, and I think in terms of the ownership when we looked, that is a large acreage, and the house is elsewhere too. So I don't believe we have variance on record for that from our initial review, so.
I was just curious, because it looks shorter on the frontage, so it, this piece would not be out of place.
But that, that has a little, it looks shorter, but it might meet the 120 when you look, it's difficult to tell on the map, plus it may be a lot that was already created way back and already has a house and has acreage further down.
Got you, yeah.
Based on which it may be a conforming lot. Or it could be a situation where it is legal nonconforming.
Yeah.
Wherein, whenever it was developed, whenever the house was built, some of the standards that we have today did not apply or wasn't there at that point. So in a nutshell, I mean, the applicant had a large acreage, three-plus acre, and at some point in time, 2021, they wanted to sell either whole or half of their property, and when they tried to do that, they sold 2.7 acreage, leaving one acre behind. But when they did that, they did not do through the standard plating process, which is usually what a surveying company should kind of look into, and somehow that got missed. What's resulting is an approximate one acre, which does not have enough width based on our zoning ordinance. It's, what's required is 120, what they have is 102, and as a matter of principle, practice, it's difficult when we run into a situation where the applicant has caused a burden or hardship on themselves because of which a variance is needed. However, we want y'all to be aware that we do have other lots in the city that is similar, so it's not a significant change compared to some of the other situations we have. So if y'all are approving, consider the conditions that's included in the report.
Other than the road frontage, everything else seems to be in order with ordinance?
Yes, in terms of the lot size, we've checked the lot area. It'll be slightly less than an acre when they dedicate the right-of-way, but our zoning ordinance has a provision for some of the older areas where right-of-way is dedicated. There is a margin, as long as the acreage is within that, they're okay.
Understood. Thank you.
And Derek, and Chairman, if I may, I always like to give you guys the standard for a variance that you're supposed to kind of make your decision against if this helps. It's in our zoning ordinance that "The granting of a variance is necessary to secure appropriate development of a parcel of land which differs from other parcels in the zone by being of such a restricted area, shape, or slope that it can't be appropriately developed without modifications." That's the first one. Here, this is a classic one, you're dealing with the shape. It doesn't quite meet the 120-foot frontage. the shape. It doesn't quite meet the 120-foot frontage, because it's the way it's ended up with, unfortunately, it was not platted when it was subdivided. So you are talking about shape. Second requirement, "The granting of a variance will not be materially detrimental or injurious to other property or improvements in the neighborhood in which the subject property is located, nor impair inadequate supply of lighter air to adjacent property, substantially increase the congestion in the public streets, increase the danger of fire, endanger public health, safety, and well-being, or substantially diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood." I don't think there's any evidence that it's going to do any of those things to any of the surrounding properties or do any damage to any neighbors. The third thing, though, is that variance desired will not be contrary to the general purpose and intent of these regulations. And I think, as Joe's and Ellie and everybody's pointed out, you know, we do require the 120-foot. They've got 102. Do you think that the intent of the regulations is met because they're close? Other area properties may have similar, be a little bit off like that, too. But if they did the subdividing, shame on the surveyor, because one of the big things, they've kind of self-created their own problem by subdividing it illegally. And that's a market on the bad side. So I guess that's the standard. And, you know, do you think, I think ultimately, you know, does this meet the general purpose and intent of the regulations? I think it's what, kind of what it boils down to. But that's the standard to apply when you're making your decision. Hope that helps.
And staff has included our notes for each of those criteria that we use to arrive at a recommendation, and it's included in the report if you would like to review that.
And a variance also requires 75% of the governing body with a zoning adjustment, which means all four would have to vote for the variance.
Has anyone talked to Ms. Walker? Or just the emails?
Just...
We have the emails. It sounds like she was concerned on maybe negative impacts to her property, but I don't know that a house... Yeah, agreed.
We haven't been able to talk, but we got the email communication.
She asked if it's going to be commercial, which obviously, it's not going to be. We're not changing the use. Yeah.
Okay, so there's an 18-foot difference in the frontage. Still possible to build a house and have a driveway. Excuse me. I'm usually at home by 6:30. I mean, there should be plenty of room to build a house and put a driveway in.
It's trapezoidal, so it's really small. Not really small, but that's the smallest piece of it.
I did notice that the back end's only 118, so it still didn't reach the 120.
Yeah, it's closer. But there's an existing driveway. It looks like it's right on the edge of the driveway. So it's like, I'm sure they've talked to the lady about moving it, but I don't think that's an option.
And based on when we reviewed it, it looked like, and the applicant may be able to give more information on that, it looked like there was an existing house. And the exclusion, the line to subdivide, that one acre was drawn based on what was existing, like the driveway and all of that. So that could have been one of the reasons why it missed that width as well. And to address what you were trying to say, I mean, yeah, the lot width is not 120. However, it is possible to meet all the other requirements in terms of spacing and all of that, and have a house on the property based on the provisions of the zoning ordinance. We're not creating a lot that is too small to develop anything. But if the variance is not approved, because it's zoned open, single-family, nothing else can be developed.
Yeah, it'll remain empty. Yeah.
Are there any other discussion?
Joe, for the sake of having it on the record for Mrs. Walker's question regarding the, how the owners will access the home due to the circular driveway, is that going to cause an issue? It was her second question for her concerns.
Is she talking about her driveway?
She wanted to know, how will the owners of the new home access one acre due to the circular driveway?
Yeah, I'm assuming she's talking about hers, because she has that circular.
I believe the circular driveway is on her property.
Yes, it's on her property. And she wanted to know that if they're going to get access from that driveway. I explained everything to her, but she wanted to ask them again.
That's a negative, right?
No, I think she, her concern was like, if that house is developed, will she have to share her driveway with the new house? But the answer is no, she doesn't have to. The new driveway can be at the other, and just like homes we see around, they won't be using her driveway.
I mean, if there's no other negative...
That would be a property owner agreement, anyway.
Yeah, she would have to give a permission.
If they decide to, they can, I guess, but...
Yeah, but that wouldn't be something the city would be involved with.
We would definitely require a driveway for each property unless there's a situation where you cannot, and a shared driveway is the only option. But to answer her question, she wouldn't have to have to share her driveway.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment. I guess my only concern is that this ordinance was created to prevent this exact situation. So I'm kind of, I'm kind of on the fence because, especially because of the opposition from the other homeowners.
Yeah, but that's why we have the ability to grant variances. We just have to decide, does a .99 whatever acre home fit in that subdivision, or is it going to be detrimental to everybody around it? That's kind of, I think, the way we're looking at it. Which I personally don't feel like it's going to lower the value of the homes around it or impact them. But that's just my opinion.
Well, just a comment about, and I think you mentioned this earlier, but if a variance is not given, then that piece of land sits there and nothing can be done with it. And to me, land's to be developed. You own some land, you need to be able to work with it. That's just a comment. Anything else?
Yeah, the staff have a...
I can just mention something. I don't know if it would address your concern. So each of our zoning district has specific bulk requirements, like minimum width, minimum area, and that is to achieve a certain intensity of development within that district. That's the purpose of each of the zoning district. However, we do have situations where, based on the criteria that we mentioned, variances could be granted as long as it is not significantly detrimental to the district and the surrounding area. Now, when we consider those things, we could look at it from the perspective of how significantly deficient things are, number one, and are we considering multiple situations of deficiencies where it gets to a point now that the district has lost its character or ability to be what it is supposed to be? Now, within the city, some of the older areas, which are zoned open, single-family residential district, we have, like Ellie mentioned, there are lots which are similar, like slightly less than one acre because of the right-of-way dedication. Because way back, when lots were created, the lot line would go all the way to the center of the street. And now, when we are trying to have city maintain the roads, whenever development happens, we are requiring that that portion be dedicated to the city so that city can run the operation. And when you do that, now it's slightly less than one acre. So we do have those situations all over the city, which is similar. Now, it would have been a different scenario if accidentally or however the subdivision happened. Now, the lot width is so narrow and the area is so low that it doesn't represent an average lot within the district, then it would have been a different discussion. I don't know if that addresses your concern. I just wanted to put it out there.
Yeah, that helps. I'm just concerned that we'll be setting a precedent going forward, that someone, that a surveyor can not do their due diligence and get away with it. That's my only concern. That and the other homeowners' opposition is what's weighing on me. But that helps. I understand.
We have that same concern. That's why usually, you're used to seeing a staff recommendation where staff says, staff is recommending approval. Instead, on this one, our concern was like, hey, we do not encourage these situations where somebody acts outside of city's requirements and regulations and creates hardship, and then we issue a variance. However, we also wanted to acknowledge that we already have these situations due to way things were in terms of subdivision, like several year, like 1960, 70, lots created back then would have some similar situations. So, but, and we depend on y'all's wisdom to make a call.
Okay, thank you.
Explain the, if the board considers approval, would you explain those two parts?
The conditions, you mean?
Yeah.
The first condition is if there is further subdivision that happens, like if there is more acreage added somehow, or if they buy another property budding this acreage and the acreage changes, or the boundaries of the lot changes, that, in that case, this variance is not valid anymore and is of no use. And the second condition is if, for some reason, the zoning designation changes on this, then we'll have to reconsider if a variance is needed or not. So we're just setting two parameters so that depending on what happens in the future, the variant is valid or not valid.
So I guess, just so I understand, they owned the property where the house is that doesn't want them there, or doesn't, it has an issue with the variance. So when they put those boundary lines, the property lines in place, they knew where the property line was going to be because they bought it from them.
Correct.
Okay. So I mean, that kind of, they didn't own that acre from the start, so...
So the...
You know what I'm saying? They, somebody bought the property from them, so they knew where the property line was, right on the edge of their driveway. It just happened, when they go to develop it, throws a red flag because it's 102 feet. Now, they can't get permits or anything without a variance. So that was never the lady's property. It was always going to be something else. Does that make sense?
So the...
It wasn't taken from her. So she bought the land out of that piece, and this was left. And it was their, surveyor made the mistake of not giving them the 120 feet. And I don't think it would have fit in the situation anyways with the driveway, but that's kind of how I'm looking at it.
I'm looking at the GIS map.
Okay. The TAP property tax?
No, I'm just looking at the track and stuff like you said.
Yeah, does it say what that 11 farther south is? Because it looks to me like it's
Can y'all pull it up on the...
Smaller.
I'm trying to pull up the GIS map on the screen so everybody can see what you're talking about. I have the map cup. Go to the... You see a blank? Bring it up.
What was that? There's a question. Just do one. Nothing. Is all there? So go down Iowa, will you?
Yeah. So she's working on it now. Get it up on the TV.
Where's Iowa?
It's Iowa. Okay.
Yeah, I see it. Yeah, that piece. So this one, to me, I see, and it is a part of larger acreage, but it does not have 120.
So are y'all still wanting to see? Are y'all still wanting to see the map up on the screen?
No, he just was asking what I was looking at, the GIS map. So I don't want to be out of decor, and I want everybody to see what I was looking at.
Ron, do you have any concerns?
Do y'all have any questions for us? Out there. Do you have any questions for us before we, as we continue?
I have a vice people.
Oh, thank you. I don't have any more questions. How's everybody else? Are y'all ready to vote? Are you more discussion?
I don't feel like it fits, in my opinion.
I don't want to pull it up anymore.
Yeah, sorry.
Ah, magic.
So Ellie, that brings it up on the map, but you may want to kind of point to the areas because it's not going to make much sense to their view.
You can see the house here?
Mm-hmm.
The subject side is north side of this. And you're telling...
Yes.
No, just a little bit farther south, yeah. Yep, that one, yeah.
I think this is a T-shaped property. So this property also has hills. So we don't know...
I think she is.
She's in the back. She's in the back.
Is that on the computer?
Yes.
The one that wrote the letter?
No, this is on Alyssa's computer.
I guess.
Right now, so...
You want to assume it's different?
No, it's on a different map.
This one's on RTIS mapping.
Yeah.
So that's the Google map.
This is a Google.
Yeah, that's Google. With the Missouri County's map, you can, in GIS, you can take the tool and measure. And what I was doing was measuring in the lot, south of that, the frontage measured 1.1...
It is less than...
Yeah, it's 105.
Yes, it is less than 120, but this property also includes the portion on the back of this subject side. So it's a T-shaped property. Based on the current ordinance, T-shaves are prohibited. But we don't know when they created this lot. They subdivided these in this. Yes.
Because the other lot, yeah, the other lot is similar to it in road frontage.
Yes. So there might be smaller lots, but they may have been under different circumstances.
Correct.
Like, for example, maybe they bought it, you know, 20, 30 years ago before the ordinance was in effect.
Correct. But does it fit into that area, or does it look different than the other lots? There's, there's other lots that are the same road frontage. To me, it fits in the area. You know what I'm saying? If it was the only one, the other one, everyone else was 250 feet or whatever, yeah, I'd be like, ah, that doesn't really fit, but that's just my, my opinion.
Yeah. I don't know if I should ask this question or not, but it, because there are only four of us, if we did not grant the variance, would they have the opportunity to appeal to the, to the full board?
No, not to the full board, it would be to district court.
Okay.
Within 10 days.
Okay. I mean, I'm just thinking about the residents who want to keep Mambo, you know, keep it, keep it as country as possible. I see that all the time. I hear that all the time. So if we were to approve this variance, then someone next month could come with the same situation, and then we approve that variance, then we're essentially changing the character-
They're all separate. Every variance is its own case, and we have to look at them separately.
Yeah, I get it.
Everyone's going to stand on its own. There's always maybe a different set of facts, different property location, and real estate is, each parcel of real estate stands on its own.
Yeah, it's unfortunate this one was created by a surveyor after we've had the, the guidelines of the ordinance to follow, yeah.
Okay.
And also, keep in mind that a lot of these areas are already developed with an existing house, so the chance is weighty. It, it's different compared to an area where there's no houses, and these things can happen more in those situations than areas where you already have houses and lots are already existing.
So, any more discussion?
No.
Are you all ready to vote?
Bobby, do you want to explain the affirmative vote? If they're going to vote against it, how the motion works?
Well, to get an item on the table, as they say, in front of the board, you need a motion and a second. And what that means is it gets it to where you can vote. If you made the motion or you made the second, you actually don't have to vote for it when it comes to the vote, but if you're just wanted to get it before the governing body, you can still make that motion and second, or second it, and then when the chair calls for the vote, you can vote for it or against it. You don't have to vote consistent with how you did to get it before the governing body. And Roberts Rules of Order always prefers positive motions. Like, you don't mo, mo, motion, make a motion to deny something. You make a motion to approve, and if it doesn't get the four votes, it's, it doesn't pass. Whereas the opposite's not true. If you motion to deny and it doesn't get the four votes, it doesn't mean it's approved. So that's why you always want a positive motion. If the positive motion fails, there's no question what happens. A negative motion that fails doesn't mean it's approved, if you can follow that. But, so we would, you know, basically, you make a motion to approve, get it second. If you have any more discussion, you can go ahead and do that. Otherwise, the chair would call for a vote and just see how it came out. You would need four affirmative votes to grant the variance with a motion to approve.
So is there a motion to, to approve the, the variance with the considerations and recommendations of staff that's, that's listed on page five? Conditions, thank you.
I make a motion to approve the variance based on the 102 frontage with the board's considerations and conditions and recommendations that the variance shall expire when the acreage of the subject site changes due to further subdivision or addition of acreage through plating or change in ownership. And number two, with the condition that the variance shall expire if the zoning designation of the subject site changed from open single-family residential district.
And is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye, with a raised hand. Those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so the motion does not pass. So with that, I'm going to say we're adjourned at, it's hard to tell what time it is.
6:53.
6:53.